City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Altonan Wilson.
Here.
Altonan Holmes.
Here.
Altonan Tindham.
Here.
Altonan Rainey.
Here.
Altonan Miller.
Here.
Altonan Fisk.
Here.
Altonan Braithwaite.
Here.
Altonan Nguyen.
Here.
Eight zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, February 22, 2016, meeting of the Evanston City Council. We are... First item on the agenda is the Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. And the first item is the installation of Seventh Ward Alderman Eleanor Ravel.
Well, maybe we'll install her.
I, Eleanor Ravel.
I, Eleanor Ravel.
Having been appointed to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Having been appointed to the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Evanston.
In the city of Evanston.
In the county of Cook, aforesaid.
In the county of Cook, aforesaid.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Seventh Ward Alderman.
The duties of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
(APPLAUSE). I will ever strive for the ideal and sacred things of the city.
I will ever strive for the sacred ideals of the city.
Both alone and with many.
Both alone and with many.
We will unceasingly.
We will unceasingly.
Seek to quicken the sense of public duty.
Seek to quicken the sense of public duty.
We will revere.
We will revere.
And obey.
And obey.
The city's laws.
The city's laws.
And will transmit this city.
And will transmit this city.
Not less.
Not less.
But greater and more.
But greater and more.
Beautiful than when it was transmitted to us.
More beautiful than when it was transmitted to us.
Presented to Eleanor Ravel upon her appointment, I am swearing in ceremony on this 22nd day of February 2016. If you have some family members or friends who'd like to come up and take pictures of this, we invite you to come up with it right now.
(APPLAUSE). My family away from home. (LAUGHING). They've sat here a long time waiting for this. (LAUGHING). At this time, I'd like to ask past Alderman of the Seventh Ward Alderman Grover to come
forward, please.
Oh, she's... (LAUGHING). Oh, it's the map. Yes, right. I'm going to entrust this to my husband to see if he can get it in the car. He's going to put it in the car. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Dee. Okay. And tomorrow, she's going to deliver all those huge notebooks that are in her garage.
City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do.
Oh, good.
First of all, I'd like to say that for those who did not register to vote for this coming March elections, that early voting will start here next Monday and go through February...I mean, March 14th. It will be open Monday through Fridays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturdays, March 5th and 12th from 9:00 to 5:00. And Sundays, March 6th and 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. During early voting, if you hadn't registered, we'll also have members from Cook County to be here to register you to vote. There will be no citizens returned away, but you will be able to vote. All you need is two pieces of identification, and one does not have to be a picture ID. So come here to Civic Center. It'll be early voting in room G300. That's on the ground floor. It'll be a lot of easier access for everybody to come in, where you don't have to take an elevator, don't have to take stairs, and we'll have ample enough chairs to keep you comfortable. The second thing I'd like to do, Madam Mayor, and I hope you'll allow me to do this, and then I'm going to go home.[418.02][418.02](LAUGHING). I have two proclamations to read. And could Akasha S. Terrier...mess it up again. Terrier. And also Letitia A. Blackman come forward, please. And Gabby. Just standing here for a moment. This proclamation is to both of them, but they each get their own separate one that they can plant on their wall. But it goes like this. Whereas Akasha S. Terrier and Letitia A. Blackman, Deputy City Clerk runs the Clerk's office efficiently, and whereas the Clerk has received numerous compliments concerning their demeanor and exemplary customer skills, and whereas she kept or they kept, the clerks informed regarding all matters, and whereas Akasha S. Terrier and Letitia A. Blackman have been dedicated and loyal since their employment in the City Clerk's office, and whereas they have proven to be a real jewel in the City Clerk's office, never complains while performing their duties. So I therefore, Rodney Green, City Clerk of Evanston, declare to the Evanston residents and to the nearby communities Deputy Clerk Akasha S. Terrier and Letitia A. Blackman are two of the best deputy clerks in the state of Illinois. Declared this 22nd day of February 2016. (APPLAUSE). Oh, my goodness. I never turned the recorder on.
(LAUGHING). You've got a lot of practice.
Congratulations, and I think he's right.
Absolutely. Excellent.
And because I know him so well, I know that Akasha's favorite color is pink.
Scary.
So for her, I got her a pink.
Oh.
And because I know that Letitia's color is blue, and I know Gabby's going to get this.
(LAUGHING). That's an outfit, too.
And good night.
Good night. (LAUGHING).
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager, do you have announcements for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. First, I'd like to ask Lawrence Hemingway, the Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, to come forward, give an update on our plans for the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program this year. Lawrence, good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, and to this council, and to all our esteemed guests. I'm proud to announce the Mayor's Summer Youth Job Fair. It's coming up in a few weeks. It'll be Saturday, March 12th, hosted at ETHS from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. But I want to make it clear, the doors will close at 1:30 p.m. So the employers will be able to stay until 3:00, but we will close the doors at 1:30. It's for Evanston youth, ages 14 to 18, that reside in the 201 and 202 ZIP code. So we're very proud to announce we're working on a partnership for transportation with one of our employers, Six Flags Great America. We're working on a transportation plan to get those young people...
I have news that came after you, and I saw each other earlier.
Sure.
Metra has promised us that we can have half-price fairs for students to go and come. They just need their student ID, and they may even be able to get it a little lower than that.
That's fantastic.
So there are hundreds of jobs at Great America that are now much more available to our young people.
So that is great.[698.12][698.12](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much, Mrs. Mayor.
You are very welcome.
All right. Thank you.
And next, I'd like to introduce new member of our staff, Kimberly Richardson. Kimberly, could you step forward? Kimberly is our new Assistant to the City Manager. So one of her many responsibilities is to make sure that the mayor and the city council get what they need for their ward meetings and their e-newsletters and general support. She'll also work on boardings and commissions and on our volunteer program and provide general assistance in our office. Kimberly comes from the village of Flossmore, where she was the Assistant to the City Manager there for a number of years. She has both a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in public administration from Northern Illinois University. So Kimberly, we're very pleased and welcome to our team.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. We have 30 speakers signed up, so if we are going to get through this, you can each have a minute and a little bit more, but that's it. If other people have already said what you are about to say, you could say you agreed with the previous speaker. I'm going to call the first three names. Could be Eric Paset.
That's great.
Oh, wait a minute. Where's the gentleman, number 16? Ted Baroney has...you're first.
No problem.
Because he has to leave.
Do we need to give him another mic?
Can you use that mic, or do we have another one?
Can you hear me?
Oscar. It's right in front.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here on that...speaking against the rental unit license proposal. My father...I'm a longtime resident from the early '70s, and I own...my father, who was a decorated war veteran who passed away not too long ago, bought property on Hinman Avenue in the Third Ward, and we've been maintaining it since. And the reason we're against this proposal, we're doing the best we can with the maintenance and everything, but a lot of times, the tenants, instead of calling us on fixing problems, they call the city, and the city comes around, and the inspectors come, but we always try to, like I said, keep proper maintenance. For instance, we always keep the temperature at 78...above the normal, at 78 degrees, yet sometimes the still tenants call the city and they come, the inspectors, and they see nothing wrong, and it's more like a nuisance call, and it leaves a bad mark on the landlord, even though we, you know, do everything up and beyond to keep the property at, you know, at highest level as possible. And we also had an incident that our...the water heater went out, and we found out early in the morning, and we called Cahill Plumbing and tried to get it fixed, yet the tenants didn't even notify us. They called the city, and inspectors come.
I'm terribly sorry, but I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. I'm just...what I'm getting at is, we're trying to keep the highest level as possible, but sometimes the tenant doesn't contact us, they call the city, and inspectors come, and it just leaves a bad mark on us, and that's why I'm against this proposal, because it makes it look like we're bad landlords, even though we do the highest standards possible that we can do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Then, next would be Eric Paset, Daniel Garrison, and Priscilla Giles.
All right. Well, I spoke at the earlier meeting, but my name is Eric Paset, and I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and condos, and also a long-term resident of Evanston. And the reason I'm against this licensing law, and I'll kind of leave out one of the earlier points I brought in, because who knows whether you're Tier Two or Tier One properties, depending on what your charge will be, but it says right here in number one of the Evanston licensing law, that if you have within a six-month period two offenses, forget about the state or federal misdemeanors, because that is valid, but of the Evanston City Code, you could be declared a nuisance building. I mean, we take care of a lot of buildings about two to four blocks from Northwestern. That would take about one day. And like I explained before, I've been in this business for about 25 years. We sit down with all the students before they move into our buildings, and we basically explain the whole lease to them thoroughly, and say, "If you're looking for a frat house or a party building, please go somewhere else." But you can't control everybody, you know? And if they do get out of line, then we make sure their parents know about it, we write letters, we give them warnings. We're very responsible landlords, at least I'm part of a very responsible landlord. I mean, to install this, it'd take you about two seconds to lose your license.
I'm sorry, but I need you to wrap up.
I'm going to wrap up.
Thank you.
And that's enough, Seth.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm Daniel Garrison. I live across the street from here, at 1228 Simpson Street. I've been a property owner and a landlord since 1972, and I'd like to speak in the first point, I'd like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance for rental licensing. And I have one small correction to make, where in the middle of your page 224, the word "covered" is there in the middle of that paragraph G. It should be "convened." That's a very small matter. I'm an editor, so I notice things like this. The other thing I'd like to speak to is more substantive, and that is that there is a single set of fees, although, as William Blake said a long time ago, "One law for the lion and the ox is oppression." The people we are most concerned with are the people who are larger renters and larger landowners. They have more units, they have more people that are...for whom they are indirectly responsible, and that therefore, I believe the schedule of penalties and remedies should be scaled to the amount of property that is owned in any individual case.
Mr. Garrison, I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
A $750 fine is very small for the larger landowners, and I propose that those be scaled to the amount of property owned. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Giles, Junad Risky, and Bob Brower.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I'm speaking against the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance as it is written. I am against it because I feel it is an avenue for the city to get more money, and that also it will be a witch hunt. That's what I have seen on my block, and so I know this can happen. The property may have someone who's not even a resident or a friend of someone there, and I think that you should punish the person rather than the address or the owner of that address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, I want to talk about lack of competency of staff. I think it's interesting, we're talking about these nuisance ordinance, the city maintaining property, when the signs here for occupancy don't even have the right code on it. Some of you ought to remember Harley Clark, the city didn't inspect the fire alarms for over a year on their property. On the Vance disposal, the city made a mess of this, we're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars. On another matter, Howard Street Theater, this council already rejected that at $2 million. We're talking $3 to $5 million now, according to the architect who was hired by the city before. We have $40,000 in fees. We're going to well exceed that. Is this competent work of the city staff to bring this back to council? This Howard Street Theater is a joke. And then let's talk about the recycling center. What happened to that? Where is it? And it's time we muzzle Mr. Bob Kowitz' misuse of the $20,000 rule here. That was used to build the patio on Howard Street. Frankly, this council is allowing these types of misuse of our money and just ignoring things. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Brower, at 800 Elgin, and I want to speak against the 831 apartment units. You have probably heard, you will hear a lot more comments tonight. I'd like to only comment on one item, and that is that the council and the planning commission have granted so many variances over the time in terms of building big buildings, 200, 300 units, that they basically say every time they grant a variance that the code is out of date. My suggestion is that this particular building be turned down, that the council think about bringing our code up to date so that there is integrity in the zoning, and people do not have to worry about changes that will take place in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carla Sutton, Tina Payden, and Renee Payden. And I very much appreciate the speakers who've kept to a minute. Thank you.
Carla Sutton, 1821 Dara. I stand in opposition to the licensing. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing, expecting a different outcome. We went through this in 2008, we went through this in 2012, and here we are again. There will be more support coming from this group if you would enforce some of the landlord's demands to maintain their properties and not penalize us for what we're trying to do to keep our properties up to standards. And secondly, and more important, this is the most vague, uninterpletable ordinance I've ever seen in my life. Good luck in enforcing it.
Good evening. Tina Payden, 1122 Emerson. I'm opposing the rental licensing as written. I don't believe that inspections currently are fair in all areas, and I don't know who is the deciding factor, that you're going to be in Tier One and Tier Two. I've also spoken with Chief Eddington, and he stated that sometimes the police don't even inform you when there's a problem at your building. So I don't think that the landlord should be held responsible, and then you're forcing someone to throw the tenant's things out, which is in opposition with the landlord-tenant rule, and you have to go to court. Sometimes, when I'm evicting a tenant, I have to go to court 10 times, which just happened last year. So there should be more communication if you want to enforce rules at the building, more communication with the landlord and the city if you're planning on taking action on someone's property. Thank you.
I'm Renee Payden at 1122 Emerson. Everything my sister said, and the rental licensing and nuisance ordinance don't go together. They encourage bias and racism, which promotes gentrification and elitism. Certain neighborhoods will get hit harder than others. I know you'll have inspections in this area once a year, but then this one never gets inspections, and that happens now. So I can see that this would get worse. Also, anonymous 311 calls can be made by disgruntled tenants who may be in the eviction process. So anonymous calls, you can't take, "Oh, the landlord is bad because he got an anonymous call." You don't know who called. So you have to kind of take that with a grain of salt. Also, this is punishing landlords for tenants, and instead, you should be working with the landlords, and I think you should include the landlords more in making this better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Sir, Lisa Pildes, and Mike Moran.
I think my husband, Michael's powdering his nose, so he's not here yet. My name is Lisa Pildes. I live at 2327 Park Place, and I own rental property with my husband. I also was on the Rental Unit Licensing Committee in 2012. Everyone else is going to talk generally about these recommendations, which I think...I hope you will send it back to committee. I understand that the city is desperate to do something. This is not the way to do it. What I want to do is just point out the four areas where, in 2012, the panel made recommendations, which are not included in the current rules that are proposed. The committee recommends that the consideration to amend the language would extend license periods until the end of an established compliance schedule. They recommended 14-day business days notice to the landlords. That's not in here either. They recommended that, rather than the city manager, that a panel, an appointed panel, be used for hearings, and they recommended the elimination of the section which prohibits the city clerk from issuing transfer stamps unless there's a valid license for every unit. Thanks.
I'm Mike Moran. I live at 3033 Central Street, and I was born and raised in Evanston. In fact, I was born right over here, St. Francis. I'm in the Sixth Ward, so Alderman Tindham, I am in your ward, our ward, and I'm against this for this licensing scheme for every reason that people have already put forth. But I'd like to point out that four years ago, when you advanced this, a similar scheme, the fining was incredible, and you seemed to have gotten a little bit better message on that. However, it's still oppressive, and if any one of us were to make a mistake, just one mistake, with a renter, we would have to sell that property to pay the fine. And it just seems totally oppressive to do that. I just have one property, and you would boot me right out of Evanston doing it because something might not even been my fault. So, no, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Just, Terry Garl, and Rick Nelson.
Thank you. I'm speaking in opposition to rental licensing. I have five...I'm sorry, 11 very brief objections. One, the right to lease units in a residential income property is fundamental to ownership, and licensing violates this right. Two, the determination of tier criteria is entirely arbitrary. Three, a license fee... Three, a license fee is a penalty, sorry, a license fee is a fee and a penalty is a penalty, but this ordinance creates punitive license fees according to arbitrary tier designations. Four, this ordinance forces landlords to break the law by ordering them to immediately evict tenants so as to avoid daily fines. Five, this ordinance deprives property owners of their fundamental right to engage in commerce by virtue of the action of their tenants over which they have no control. Six, this ordinance handicaps larger properties. Two nuisance offenses in a four-unit building is 50% of the tendency. Two offenses in a 200-unit building is 1% of the tendency. Seven, the rule indicating that the city will withhold transfer tax stamps on a penalty, I'm sorry, excuse me, on a property with a suspended license is counterindicative to the purpose of the ordinance. Eight, revoking a rental license necessarily creates blight and chaos at the premises. This, again, is counter to the intention of the ordinance.
I do need you to wrap up.
Three more. Performing code inspections for the purpose of stopping crime is nonsensical. These inspections are purely for the purpose of intimidating property owners and residents. Ten, forcing owners of single-family properties to post contact information stigmatizes these properties. Eleven, this ordinance discourages investment in the city of Evanston, and especially discourages investment in lower-income sections of the city, therefore encouraging blight and crime as opposed to preventing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Jerry Garl. I'm in the 8th Ward, and I'm here to speak against the proposed settlement for the waste transfer station. I have a longer statement to present, if I could bring this up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would like to just say that this is, there's an opportunity here, and there's only one, to develop a host, a community host agreement for this facility that Evanston can use to ensure that the city is financially capable to implement the appropriate oversight and controls. Communities across the country are doing this. When you've got a waste transfer facility that does not comply with existing zoning requirements, that host community agreement developed with engaged public involvement can include provisions that are way beyond the current settlement agreement. That includes things like limits on the types of waste accepted and restrictions on the sources of those wastes, restrictions to use low-emission or alternative-fuel vehicles to reduce exposure to toxic diesel emissions by children and other sensitive populations in the area, restrictions on operating hours and traffic routes, financial support to the city to assist with facility oversight, independent third-party inspections or video monitoring.
I do need you to wrap up, sorry.
Okay, and you can read the rest of it. But there are many opportunities. Evanston is a leader in sustainable communities, and I think we need to step up to this challenge.
I have one question. Were those communities that you referenced, ones where the station is already there?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, these are non-conforming uses, where the host agreement is the only mechanism because this facility is permitted in perpetuity. The host agreement is the only mechanism to put these controls in place.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Nelson. I'm in the 7th Ward. Actually, I kind of threw out my three-minute spiel, so I have my Cliff Notes here. But I really have three questions as you actually deliberate on the waste transfer station settlement and host agreement. So I'd like to pose those three questions for everybody to think about. The first is, in the current packet, there is basically a $2.28 host fee that's being incurred by active, excuse me, by advanced in Batavia. So one of my questions is, if that's $2.28 is acceptable there, why is it that we can only try to get 75 cents here? I mean, that's less than one-third of something that currently is going on, at least per the packet. So that's my first question. My second question is, right now, the agreements as they stand, the host agreement, it looks like it's somewhat unending, or it's very difficult to get out of, and there's some pretty heavy penalties to be incurred. So to me, it actually smacks of, what if later on, if all of a sudden, some new health problems come from the environment? What if the marketplace for some of these host fees goes up in 10 years? Do we want to be stuck with something that goes on forever? So that's actually something that I think is concerning and something I think people should think about. My third item is, why were the people who live around the waste transfer station not allowed to provide their input early in the process? I just think that that's something that really is a shame, and I think it's something that actually could still be corrected if this process extended a little bit longer.
I do need you to wrap up, please.
And allowed for that. So those are the three issues I'd like people to deliberate on, and I appreciate your time very much.
Thank you. Next is Betty Esther, maybe it's Sam Thomas, my apologies, and Issa Kabir.
Good evening. My name is Betty Esther, and I'm speaking against this ordinance. First, it was supposed to be for introduction, February the 8th. I sent an email request to all of you asking that you hold this and have community meetings. That request went on deaf ear because there was no community meeting. Although you have here in this room lots of landlord, this here also affects the people that rents these units. When you talk about inspection and the nuisance and stuff, when you talk about the drugs and everything, possession, are you talking about the landlord having it or the tenant? So you get it, how are you going to find that? When inspections occur, that they are inspecting property. So to find this, are they coming in to go rambling through the tenant's belongings? This ordinance need to be discussed in the community. It is not legal. There is more holes in this than in a cradle that you fill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sam Thomas, and I live at 803 Dodge in Evanston. I just want to say that I agree with everything that's been said so far, except one person that was in agreement of this right here. I think this is unfair ordinance to all landlords. It's discriminatory. If we just, if the city just enforces what they already have on the books, they can get what they're asking for. There's laws. You're asking landlords to be police, judges, lawyers, and hangmen. That's not why we got into this. And I guarantee you, there will be people that will walk away from Evanston because of this ordinance. If this was in effect when I bought the building, the property I have here, I wouldn't be in Evanston right now.
Thank you.
Issa Kabir, peaceful greetings to the panel. I had an issue that I was going to bring up, but I was advised to take the proper channels. But I want to say, I'm going to speak on the hiring at Northwestern for the construction, the LEP program. This, like, little scapegoat they have with the fine that they could pay, you know, they hire people and they lay them off a week later, you know, and then they say, okay, well, we complied with the little... Martin, how you doing? You need to cut out that little scapegoat that they have with the fee that they can pay the companies, the contractors, because that is unfair, man. You know, if you don't give them a chance to escape the compliance, then they won't, you know? That should be mandatory, that every company contractor that comes in, including the general contractors, should hire an Evanston resident, man. You know, but I'll talk to you more about it. I know you still have the meetings on every third Wednesday. Okay. But you did get on Boulder Contractors. I heard they hired somebody, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Megan McCollum, Dan Schummerhorn, Lisa Pildes.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for your attention this long evening that we have. I'm here to stand before you. I currently own 2515 Ashland Avenue, and I'm here to ask you to vote against the landlord I don't know how many of you own properties, rental properties in this town, but this room is filled with a lot of experience of people who are investing their money, their efforts, their sweat equity in this town to make it a better place. So if this community has a problem, whether it be crime or whether it be nuisances, it's not your problem, it's our problem too. So my suggestion is to bring forth to you not just a bunch of gripes, but rather a suggestion to create a public partnership, a public-private partnership, to enable not just the landlords here to help the city council, but possibly have some of the successful landlords here mentor less-successful, or as you guys have dubbed it, troubled properties or nuisance properties. Some landlords just don't know how to solve their own problems, and some people, for them, it's easier to put their head in the sand and just hope it goes away. But there are plenty of people here who've obviously been successful enough to continue investing here in Evanston. So if you created that public-private partnership, it may allow us to help you solve the problems that we haven't been able to solve as of yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan Schummerhorn with Schummerhorn &amp; Company. I'll be brief. I mentioned in the last public comment that there isn't a landlord in this room that is not in favor of solving, helping to solve crime problems, nuisance problems. But the ordinance as presented is really asking landlords to take responsibility for the personal behavior of tenants, and it just is not a viable solution to the problem that we're trying to solve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on your list is Lisa Pildes. That's my wife. And she has deeded her space to me because I was out eating fried chicken when you called my name. Chicken Shack has great fried chicken, but they make it when you order it. I will be very brief. I want to talk a little bit about 831. About two weeks ago, it came up in hearings, and the point was made that the property could be, the ownership of the property could be transferred to Northwestern, and if that happened, then the property would no longer be on the tax rolls. As a response to that, the city staff seems to have inserted a tax-exempt covenant provision in the current proposal. And I read it, and I don't think it would make Northwestern pay real estate taxes if they bought the property. I don't think it could legally do that. I might be wrong about that. While I am a lawyer, I'm a litigator, and I'm not a real estate lawyer, I could be wrong about that. But I think at a minimum, I would get an official opinion from a qualified outside real estate and tax lawyer that tells you that this provision is enforceable against Northwestern before you would consider approving this, because I don't think it'll work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is R. Henry, 831 Emerson, Diane Petersmark, and Liz Luby.
Hi. Regarding 831 Emerson, we're totally against the project there. We don't like what it is going to be. We would like something like rental or condos for seniors, a senior-assisted place, a professional building, a daycare, something or some sort of condo building that new families could come to. We're willing to have a large building there, but we want it to be something that would add to Evanston and add to the neighborhood, and something that we could work with. The way it's set up right now, it sticks out like a sore thumb, and it's going to be a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Petersmark from 1860 Sherman, directly across the street from 831 Emerson. And I think that this piece of property is very valuable, both to Mr. Ippson, who owns it, and to the city of Evanston. I think if the city works with Mr. Ippson to find a developer who will do something to promote the future of the city by bringing in young families, young professionals, retirees, build some affordable housing. We hear all this about all this money going into an affordable housing fund, but nobody is building affordable housing. So this would just be a better option than having a bunch of student transients who are going to be here for a year or two, and then are going to be gone. And if we had a development that promoted Evanston residents, people who would stay here, people who might buy single-family homes. It's a much better idea.
Thank you. Liz Luby, Don Flaton, and Janet Davis, Alexander Davis.
Good evening. My name is Liz Luby, and I live at 721 Foster Street. And I am here to repeat what I've said several times before, some of you, and it is regarding our total rejection of this 831 plan. Let me see if I can be... It's the wrong targeted group, young professionals and grad students all living in the same place. I can't imagine that they'd get along very well or for very long. Second item, too dense of a population and too small a piece of property. We talked about Raymond Park having 132 residents. This place is going to have 400. That's incredible to think of the comparison. What happens if this doesn't work out? If they don't get the renters they want, they don't stay. What happens to the property after that? Who takes over? And how can this piece of property be redeveloped into the things we've talked about? I was very disappointed, as we all were, that the Plan Commission did not listen to any of these objections that we made, and I wonder why they didn't. They granted eight of the 11 variances that this developer asked for, and I was most... There was no explanation why. Is that going to happen every time somebody comes into town with a new idea? The voice... That's one more issue. The building... Another thing that was mentioned in all of this is the...
I do need you to wrap up, sorry.
Environmental issues that this building is going to face when this ground is all turned over. Now, there hasn't been any explanation about how that might all be dealt with. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Don Flaton. I'm here to just speak in objection to the rental licensing and nuisance ordinances that are being proposed. I'm a five-year resident of Evanston. I've owned real estate for quite a long time in Chicago, and recently purchased a very lovely property here in Evanston, which I am frankly starting to regret. I don't expect a serious problem at this property, but I've had enough experience in the business to know that I'm only one bad day away from having a problem with tenants that might bring me within the orbit of this ordinance. And it's frightening to me after having read it. I think the ordinance is impermissibly vague and gives broad and unfettered authority to Evanston officials who can easily punish a landlord that they see fit to punish. I have one question, and then I'll be done. And that is, why is it that when a city doesn't have the personnel, or the funds, or the competence to enforce its existing laws and regulations, it then goes out to make more laws? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Tisdale, city clerk, and city manager. My name is Janet Alexander Davis. I am a 5th Ward resident for too many years to count. I emailed this email to Alderman Homes late this afternoon before the AP&amp;W meeting. I was hoping that they would hold the waste transfer, at least the host agreement part of it, so that there could be community involvement. I wrote, "Dear Alderman Homes, I greatly appreciate your service to the residents of the 5th Ward. I write to you with concern about the agreement to be brought forth to the A&amp;P Committee tonight for action. The community only received notice about this agreement less than one month ago. I believe it was 1/25/16. I watch most council meetings and have witnessed the many hours spent on the issues of Harley-Clark and several other hot issues brought before the council. I realize the majority of the council members don't live on this side of town. And I can honestly say I've never, that they can say that they've never experienced the stench nor the traffic stoppage, and more produced by advanced disposal and the previous owners. I know you know the background issue of this site and what the city must face due to the state of Illinois EPA decision to grandfather in this garbage dump. Amazing decision that doesn't affect the state, but impacts the town and its neighbors. I'd love to have a few words with former Alderman Joe Kent. I would appreciate more time to be taken to test the air around the site to determine anything that affects our community now and possibly become worse in the future. I would appreciate the host agreement include wording detailing the consequences if advanced disposal doesn't follow through with the final agreement under the host agreement."
Janet, I need you to wrap up.
There needs to be time taken to talk with those who have worked long and hard on this issue and to add language that would protect us. These residents of Evanston have done lots of research on waste transfer stations. Can we say the same of those making this decision about our neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker is Madeline Ducray.
Madeline Ducray, won't be long, three issues. The nuisance integrity. I don't agree with it. I think it should go back to the drawing board and maybe include the community. Second, I hope everyone do not forget tomorrow, Dr. Logan's Police Community thing. Everyone should come. We should be able to work together with the police. And one of the things I wanted to thank you, Mayor, and anyone else who were involved in the Ray Knox boo boy. I didn't know that he lived in town, and maybe a lot of other people didn't know.
I didn't know till-
But I thank you all for doing that, because now I can tell my grandchildren about it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of February 8. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening and asked for your approval for the following items. The payroll, February 7, $2,686,980.25. The Evanston bills, through the 23rd of February, $983,514.66. We ask your approval for the 2016 expenditure to total parking solutions for the pay station maintenance fees associated with 21 parking meter terminals in an amount of $35,280. Approval is requested for Northeastern Illinois Public Safety Training Academy, 2016 membership dues, $23,545. Approval is also requested for a contract with Clark Deets for the Fleetwood Jordane Center HVAC and electrical improvements for engineering services in the amount of $74,997. Approval is requested for the extension with J.A. Johnson Paving for paving-patching services in the amount of $600,000. They're holding their price from 2015 at $22.25 a square yard. Approval is also requested for a contract with Jasco Electric Corporation for the Foster Field Athletic Lighting renovations in the amount of $267,765. Your approval is also requested for a contract with Christopher Burke Engineering for Fountain Square renovations in the amount of $183,321.50. Please approve change order number two for the Police and Fire Headquarters Data Center Emergency Construction Services with Nesco Design Build Electric for the Police Fire Headquarters Construction Services Project. This change order extends the project's completion date by 46 days to March 25, 2016. No change in the cost. Approval is requested for change order number two for repair and repainting of North and South Stand Pipes with American Sun Craft Company. The contract amount is increased by $231,602.69. Also, it extends the duration by 162 days from December 21 to May 31, 2016. Approval of change order two for the North and South Stand Pipe Rehab Engineering Support Services in the not-to-exceed amount of $14,473.97. Extension to May 31, 2016 also. Resolution 5R16, that's off the consent agenda. Okay. And how about A6 also? Okay.
Yep, off.
All right. Resolution, A7 is off also, correct?
Off, and also A8, please. Thank you.
Moving right along. Approving the host agreement is also off. All righty. Repeal of prior waste transfer station fee ordinance is also off. Okay. Ordinance 3016, Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance is, I'm telling you, it's off. It's off.
Did you guys do anything?
Next item is off. Rental licensing is off the consent agreement. Ordinance 12016, authorizing the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Public Water Supply Loan Program, authorizing us to borrow up to $2245,000. Planning and Development Committee met this evening. Alderman Fisk, do you want the first item off? Did you say yes?
I did.
Okay. That item is off. Granting major zoning relief for one open parking space at 1610 Fowler. This is for introduction. It is a request from Planning and Development to deny this. Which is a vote yes. Ordinance 14016 is for introduction, establishing regulations for domestic animal daycare businesses and dog sitting businesses as permitted home occupations. For introduction, and we're asking that the council suspend the rules on this, and voting for it. Ordinance 20016 grants a special use for a resale establishment, Threads Boutique, at 1304 Chicago Avenue. I'm moving introduction, suspension of the rules, and action. Ordinance 21016 grants major zoning relief for a generator and one open parking space at 1140 Lake Shore Boulevard. The committee also requested that the council suspend the rules on this, so I'm moving introduction, suspension of the rules, and action on P5. I think ordinance 16016 is off the consent agenda. Good call. All right. And Madam Mayor has no recommendations for appointments to committees. I therefore move the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Brathwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Miller, would you take us through Administration and Public Works?
Yes. Item A5 is basically, that's where we're starting. Is there an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Chicago for the operation of divvy bike stations in Evanston? Recommended for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson.
The divvy bikes are awesome. The divvy bikes are fun. I just feel like they cost too much for what they are. So I just wanted the opportunity to say no on it.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
Same reasons. I think we have other priorities we should be spending money on.
Okay. Alderman Rainey.
What will be the status of the $320,000 grant?
If this was denied, then I think it stays in Chicago.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I guess question to City Manager, are there any other bike-sharing programs that are out there?
Nationally, sure. I think the attraction to this was the ability to, well, certainly the grant, certainly the sponsorships, the economies of scale with an existing operation. You know, the, most communities that have started from scratch either, or smaller communities have not had that opportunity of scale. And so that combined with the money we receive from the state of Illinois, which likely we will not ever see again, makes sense.
Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I've been critical all along of the cost of the divvy program, especially to consumers. And I have a running conversation about this in my head all the time. And I'm really curious as to why with the various resources that are available to us, we just can't get bikes, paint them, put them around town. We've got our bike lanes. We've got people who want to ride them. If we lose a bike here or there, that's no great loss. We're not getting very much money from advertising. So I, this, I really want to look at this and issues like this and say, where could we put the money? Where else could we put the money that would actually be more productive? And what alternatives do we have? And it seems to me that we have an alternative here that we haven't explored.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
As we raise the sponsorship money, can that be put towards the match for the $320,000?
Yes. That's in part what it's used for.
Okay. So that's not ex, okay. What's the likelihood of raising that kind of money to match the $320,000?
Ms. Knapp is standing outside the area. I believe she reported at a committee that we were over $200,000.
No, I thought she said $28,000.
No, no. What, Ms. Knapp, what was the number of commitments so far from the private entities?
It was $287,000.
It is, in addition to the $320,000.
Correct.
All right. So how much money is left to support, needed to support the installation of these stations?
So in looking at the local sponsorships, in addition to the grant funding, and also looking at the parking funding money that we have already set aside, and then taking out the total payment of the stations and the required local match of $80,000, we would have left $186,000.
To raise.
We would have left as positive.
All right. How much are we taking from the parking fund? I want to know, what is it actually costing us?
Sure, sure. So the-
The city pocket.
So to answer your second question, I believe, the total payment for the stations, looking at the cost to buy the 10 stations to install them, and then also the operating costs until the end of the year, would be approximately $593,000. And, so, excuse me, 943, 900, excuse me, $593,440.
Okay, so.
Is the total cost until the end of January of this year, is the end of December of this year.
So Alderman Rainey, members of the council, I think perhaps to answer the question more precisely, we have largely covered the costs of starting the program. And so it is going to be the ongoing cost, which I think is what has been the point of discussion that the council's had over the last two years, that you've discussed this, so.
We will raise that money.
We will raise that money in part. And then as we go forward with operations in '17, '18, and beyond, I mean, those are the dollars that we'll need to make up. And so we hope that, we have not counted in the costs of individuals actually running the bikes. And so we will get a portion of that cost associated with it. So really, I think the question, and it has been the question for the council for the last two years, is the support of this moving forward. That we've got largely covered the startup costs, it's the support moving forward. We have the example of Chicago where the ongoing costs have been met through user fees. They've been met through additional sponsorships. As I mentioned at committee, my sense is that once this is in place, especially with the addition of the Village of Oak Park, that additional sponsorships will come, and we'll be able to largely cover the operating costs as we move forward. So that's really, I think, the kicker, is covering those operating costs moving forward. If for some reason we are unable to do that, we have the asset of the bikes and the stations. And so we will be able to liquidate if we would need to do that. But I think, again, the council has talked about this for the last two years. We've received the funds from the state of Illinois. Perhaps the last time we'll receive any kind of transit-oriented funds from the state in any time, and my confidence is that we will be able to move forward with this and cover our operating costs in the future.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
And when you say going forward, you mean January 2017?
'17 and beyond. 2017 and beyond.
Does anyone want any further discussion?
Does that change anybody's mind? No.
I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering, for those who don't support this, would that change anybody's mind that we've raised this amount of money?
Alderman Miller.
For me, no. I'm looking at the City of Chicago, which I think will have much more users than our systems. They're still losing money year after year on this. So we're going to end up subsidizing this at some point. And the question is, should we be subsidizing this? Or should we be spending the money in other ways? So for me, you know, saying we're going to raise the money through fees, I don't think we have a good estimate of what we actually will raise. I don't think we have any idea how many riders will do it. So I don't think it's worth the gamble.
Alderman Revel.
Let me figure out my buttons here. Well, I think there's a great enthusiasm out in the community for the divvy bike-sharing program. I would like to see us take the chance that we seem to have the funding in place to get it going and ask the community to step up and make use of the program. It's part of our big sustainability push to get more people out of their cars and biking, walking, taking public transportation. So I would urge my colleagues to support getting this program started.
Thank you. Seeing no lights on for further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Yes.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
No.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brathwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Five to four.
Five to four, the motion passes. Alderman-
Item A6 is Resolution 14R16, which is an operating agreement with Motivate International for the, to implement the divvy bike-share program in Evanston. Move approval.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? City Clerk, would you call the roll on Resolution 14R16?
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
No.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Brathwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Five to four, the motion passes.
Item A7 is Resolution 6R16, which is a settlement agreement with advanced disposal in the amount of $1,263,200. in the amount of $1,263,247.90, and move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Alderman Wilson.
I wasn't on AP&amp;W, so I didn't get a chance to talk about it, but obviously, this is a very difficult situation for us to be in as a city, but I think, as most people recognize, and maybe some people don't recognize, we are defendants in a lawsuit, so it's requiring us to look at a compromise, and I've talked to some of the other Aldermen about, you know, the impacts, and I think, I just want everybody to know that I have a personal commitment to make sure that the impact fees that we collect go directly to the impacted area, so in other words, not just dumped into the general fund of the city. That's my commitment to that aspect of it. I've gotten a number of pieces of, or pieces, a number of emails and comments from individuals about the idea that we haven't had public meetings about the settlement, we haven't had community meetings about the settlement, but it's a lawsuit, so that's just, it's, unfortunately, that's not how it works, so the lawyer has been handling it, he's been going to court, he's been doing these things that the public doesn't participate in, so if it were different, it would be different, but it's just, it's a lawsuit, and we're not, we're not, we didn't file a lawsuit, we're defending, so we're trying to get out of it as much as we can, before we passed the ordinance that we passed, we weren't collecting any impact fees, but collectively, we all recognize that there is a very significant impact, there is harm to the neighborhood, and that is an important thing to address, which is why we passed the ordinance, and then, of course, we ended up on the wrong side of a lawsuit, so I feel like we're trying to do the best we can to get out of that effectively, and so even though we're a defendant, we're not paying anything, we're not giving up, we're just, I think, trying to get the best deal we can get, so that's the context, and it's not the best deal in the universe, it's not what we want, and in fact, it's, we don't want it, but it gets us out of the lawsuit, we don't lose, and we do get something positive, it's a big chunk of money, and we will get money going forward, and it's just, I forget who said it, but somebody said that we should go back and talk to the person who had some responsibility back in the 80s, and I think we'd all like to have that same conversation.
Thank you. All right, Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple of quick comments, and I share these comments at AP&amp;W to remind the new people who don't have the same history in terms of the city's investment in this whole issue, that four years ago, that the city did hire a staff person to assist with, assisted neighbors with their concerns, in addition to that, we established a 3-1-1, which I am very confident really helped with the reporting lines, and Alderman Holmes and myself was part of that meeting, there is something in the ordinance, I was trying to find the page grant, that stated that advanced disposal will have a 1-800 line, and so I just want to encourage us to continue to use the 3-1-1 line as a reporting tool, just so we can continue to keep track and monitor the complaints over the years, is just my one concern. In addition to that, and I've heard from my residents, there's one issue that I'd like to address openly is the impact fees, and so currently, I understand how we got to the 75%, but I do want to revisit if the waste transfer station should increase their tipping volume over the 35, I think it's the 35 tons per quarter, that we look at increasing the fees by percentage, so I understand more tons, more money, but if they go over that 35 ton as a way of capping their use, that I would like to increase the fee, and maybe we return it to that $2 per ton.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Madam Clerk, with respect to that issue, just so I'm clear on the proposed direction, you would seek a increased enhanced fee for tonnage per quarter that would exceed 35,000 tons.
That is correct.
Okay, okay, and then just to be responsive to your other inquiry, on page 171 of the council packet, section 2 of the proposed HCA is where the telephone line requirement is there, and also the requirement that advanced respond to citizen complaints within 24 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Because sometimes this can become very confusing, that we are voting now to settle, to make the settlement, has nothing to do with the host agreement, so I don't want people to get confused, so, when the voting starts.
Thank you, Alderman Ravel.
Well, this is an opportunity for us to obtain more information from advanced disposal about just what is going into that waste transfer station, I can certainly understand that we don't, that is proprietary knowledge as to where the waste is coming from, but I would like to see us require advanced disposal to tell us what types of waste are going into the, into that facility, so that we can better assess what might be the health impacts for the community.
They actually post that on their, they post that right in front of the waste transfer station, I don't have it in front of me.
The actual content?
Yeah, what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Okay.
All right, looks as if we're ready to vote on Resolution 6R16, approving the settlement with advanced disposal, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Back to you, Ms. Alderman Miller.
Resolution 7R16 is approving the host agreement with advanced disposal, and this would permit the city to collect a 75 cent per ton host fee for waste transferred through the waste transfer station, resolution was held in committee, and we'll go to that, move approval.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Do I need to make an amendment to this, or is that, was my comments enough direction?
Might I suggest this? Might I suggest this, Alderman Braithwaite and members of the council, the way that the Resolution 7R16 is currently styled, in the fifth whereas, and also in section 1, I drafted it following direction at the prior meeting regarding the host fee payable section, so this is why this speaks to the issue of the escalator, which was the subject of discussion, and now would also cover the issue with respect to capping the fee of 35,000, and then charging an increased fee, so I think for purposes of the discussion, Alderman Braithwaite, the direction on the record is quite clear, that you and the council are directing me specifically to seek an increased host fee for any ton over 35,000 that is delivered per quarter, and I will specifically go back to advanced and raise that issue, and also confirm within the terms of any host agreement, the escalator clause that's set forth in the memorandum.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we're adopting, excuse me, the resolution with that change, City Clerk, would you call? Oh, okay, it's only being introduced.
The resolution's on for action.
It's for action.
Oh, this is the resolution, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The next one's yours.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Item A9 is ordinance 8016, which is to repeal the prior waste transfer station fee ordinances. Move approval.
All right, it's been, Alderman Wilson.
Just so everybody out there understands, so this is for introduction, we'll approve it later, and by the time we're looking at it for approval, we'll hopefully have the answer to the question on the resolution that we just discussed.
Correct, the ordinance will have a host community agreement that will address those two points.
So we won't, we won't be repealing it in advance of the, right, okay.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
If I'm to understand correctly, this then would probably come back to us on the 14th of March?
The ordinance has to come back, that is correct.
All right, would there be time, I guess, City Manager, that we could have some kind of a meeting where residents could come and maybe sit with staff, or talk with staff about some of the concerns that they have, so that we could, I think I've tried to send every email that I've received to the legal department so that we are aware, but there still seems to be a need for some kind of input, and I don't know, I'm thinking pretty much like you did with the budget, maybe we could just have an afternoon or an early evening meeting, that if people wanted to come, they could do that, I don't want to take up too much of staff's time, but I would like to make sure that that was an opportunity for that.
Alderman Holmes, members of the council, we certainly can do that, with the council's approval of Resolution 7R16, that has set now the terms and conditions of the host agreement, so we would really just be sharing what has already been agreed to, if that's what you're looking for in a meeting, fine, but if people have additional ideas, the council have already acted on our direction for the host agreement, so that's, happy to have the meeting, it's just that if there are additional ideas, we won't be able to incorporate them.
Alderman Wilson.
Maybe I misunderstood part of what you're saying, but we're going to be getting a chunk of money, so can we be wrapping the idea of what we're going to do with this, you know, into that conversation, and that, you know, I think that's what the community in part is interested in having some input on.
Could be.
Right, and then we can kind of have that input in the community meeting.
Well, I know that, and if part of the, a lot of it is covered, I think is covered, but I know that some of the concerns are the issues of the air quality, you know, want to make sure that those things are really clear, I heard tonight, and I know I read it in Mrs. Davis's email, what would be the consequences if they don't do what they say they're going to do, how are we going to do that, I mean, I think there's things to talk about with the community, or to give them at least the opportunity to have had some input. I don't have an agenda for the meeting, but I just think that we ought to have the opportunity.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Nguyen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll be brief, so, obviously, the members of Churchview Village, along with other, there's been a very committed group of residents that have followed this issue since day one, and so at the last AMP&amp;W meeting, I'd shared information in our newsletter, encouraged them to come out, and it's, listening to their concerns is how we incorporated the increase of fees, the fee scale, and additionally, the recommendation that was made this evening, we also had a ward meeting last week, Thursday, where residents were encouraged, and at that time, Acting City Manager Marty Lyons gave an update, and we actually didn't have too many people show up, so I'm definitely in favor of having a follow-up meeting, Don, I think that's, Alderman Wilson, I think that's an excellent idea to talk about it, if and when we settle, to look at the funds, what neighbors feel are priorities in that area, in addition to infrastructure repairs, and follow the truck routes, et cetera, so Alderman Holmes, I'm sure at the date when this is settled, we'll work together and schedule a meeting, if you're open to that.
If I'm the only one that feels a meeting is necessary, then fine, I'm, that's, that's fine with me.
We're saying it's a, we're saying it's a good idea, and I'm open to working with you to do that.
We'll see.
And again, my only concern, Alderman Holmes, members of the council, is not to set inappropriate expectations, that members of the community feel that they're going to be able to make additional changes, or add additional conditions to a host agreement, that that will not be on the table, for me.
And I hear that, and I think that sometimes all people want to do is to be heard.
Be happy to have a meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen.
Well, I think, perhaps Alderman Holmes, the number of questions that you received, there could be something that could be provided to the community as well, of frequently asked questions, but how is the operation of this agreement going to work in the future, as you said, the issues of, that were raised about monitoring the air quality, so that people have that, so they can understand better, not just having the legalese of these agreements.
And a lot of it is in here, I understand that, we read this, but everybody doesn't read it the way that we read it, and so that's why I'm saying.
So, in the sense of, you know, what are the most frequently asked questions, and how this will operate?
That might be a good idea, we could even send that out, but maybe a meeting is not necessary, we could send that out electronically to most of the people, and there is a committee, I believe it's the Subcommittee of the Environmental Board, that has worked on this issue, that maybe they could be the folk that we would want to reach.
All right, I think that concludes discussion of this, Alderman Miller.
Calling for a vote, no, did we vote on it?
No, it's for introduction.
Oh, okay, you're saying A9? No, we're in A10.
A10, moving right along.
A10, ordinance 3-0-16.
We didn't vote.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
We need to introduce.
You want to, okay, all in favor, well, City Clerk, do you want to call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, that's introduced.
Item, oh, sorry, move approval of item A10, which is ordinance 3-0-16, which is the amendments to the, it's the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance, which is our Nuisance Premises Ordinance amendments, this is not the Licensing Ordinance, move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, I have an idea, all right, I see a lot of familiar faces in the audience, a number of people that are out there, I spent, and some of us spent a lot of hours working with, I think in 2012, on some of these ideas, and some of the problems haven't been resolved, so we still have problems to address. The difficulty with the licensing provision, to me, I'll call them the deal killers, the two big things are the amount of resources that would be required to inspect all of the rental units in the city, but not only that, is, it's the what happens if, what happens if someone loses the license, and that question, as we heard from a number of people, and as I can see from reading the English language, we don't want to be putting out the tenants who didn't do anything wrong, the idea here is to address sometimes tenant problems, but also problem landlords, the licensing part is the problem landlords, the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance is more of a combination, so what I would like to do, and prefer to do, is to take what I'll call the repercussions, in other words, the, I don't necessarily want to call them the penalties, but the repercussions from the licensing proposal, and for those of us up here, it's page 234, and some of those repercussions, and you guys don't have the packet, so sorry for that, but the repercussions are things, and some of you even mentioned these things, the idea of the mentoring, for someone who's noncompliant with the Integrity Ordinance, if the landlord doesn't do what they're supposed to do, if they get their notice, they don't follow through, they don't do it, there are some options in that Integrity Ordinance, but I think we should supplement that with the concepts that are in the Licensing Ordinance, and some of these concepts are, for example, the training course, that's more of a mentoring type of environment, maybe you don't need to hit the person with a big fine, maybe they have good intentions, maybe they're struggling, maybe they don't know how to deal with the tenant, maybe they don't know where to get an attorney to do the eviction for them, these are things that can be covered in this kind of training idea, if security is the problem, we have a subsection B, is to complete the security assessment, if the property's noncompliant, we would have that more frequent inspections, the yearly inspections, it doesn't require us to do an inspection of all of the properties that aren't a problem, I saw it quoted somewhere, that we have maybe 19,000 rental units, if we only have, you know, a relatively small percentage, allocating that huge amount of resources to the non-problem properties will render us ineffective in dealing with the problem properties, so my suggestion is this, have, Corporation Council's going to need to write it up, and it is just for introduction, but I move that we amend A10 to incorporate what I've just referred to as the repercussions in, on page 234 of the Licensing Ordinance, and move forward with that, and then just drop the Licensing Ordinance, the rest of the Licensing Ordinance, just, it's kind of fraught with problems, and we're looking for tools in the toolbox, as a lot of people are fond of saying, so let's just, let's take the few tools that are the good tools, not have the, put the tenants who might have paid their rent and their landlord did something bad tool away, because we don't need that, and not put a huge burden on ourselves to do these inspections, and I think- And I think that we're going to have a much more effective product, and I think it's going to be a little easier for our staff to implement it. It's not going to just kind of be a one, you know, one thing that's available to them. It provides us with some opportunities to be collaborative, but if the landlord's not collaborative, it provides very stringent repercussions. So, that's my proposal.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Good tools, bad tools, very subjective, Alderman Wilson. And quite honestly, I've almost committed this ordinance to memory as the licensing ordinance, and I really don't know what you're talking about. This is exactly why we do not discuss introductory ordinances, because somebody goes on and on and on about something that nobody was prepared to deal with. It's for introduction. We have two weeks to figure it out, and, you know, if you want to appoint a subcommittee to work with the Law Department, that's fine, but the Law Department gave us what we have. Our Law Department is very sharp, but this is very controversial, and when you have an ordinance that creates this much dissension, there's something wrong with it. We need to fix it. And I don't know that your fix is the right one. So, I don't want to sit here for two weeks and get what you've just suggested and find that it's, I'm absolutely not in support of it, or maybe nobody else will be. So, could we just maybe all submit our ideas in writing, or just fight it out next week, or in two weeks? But I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't support what you just said, because I don't know what you just said.
Thank you.
Because I don't believe, I don't believe landlord training is the answer to anything. And like I said last week, can you imagine Sargon Isaac going to landlord training? Nobody needs it more than him, and he's not going to go. Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Holmes, Alderman Rainey, maybe even Alderman Miller, have this guy in their ward. He's the worst landlord in town, I think. And he's not going to go to landlord training. And his properties, many of them, are subject to being, you know, a nuisance premises, and so I, your tools aren't the same tools I would put in my toolbox.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Holmes?
You know, we've done, as has been reminded of us tonight, that we've been on this road in 2008, and then again in 2012, and we still can't seem to get it right, or get something that we can all agree upon. And I was listening to, before the, Alderman Wilson made his recommendation, I was trying to put this in my head in terms of the license versus the registration. I was talking to some residents earlier, and obviously, they had registered their properties, and we were talking, I said, but you did what you were supposed to do, you registered, and you're, that's great. But then we have a lot of people who don't do that, and who didn't register, and so we have these properties that are not registered, which is what's pushing us to try and get a license or required registration, and then how do we implement that? And I, that's still, I just don't get that, and I don't know if that's going to get it, this Alderman Wilson, or not, because I don't hear that in what you were just saying.
Okay.
Am I, did I miss it?
I can answer it. I think maybe, well, I didn't cover that part of it.
Oh, okay.
The registration is required, and there are penalties for the registration. And as a lot of the landlords pointed out, the landlords that are doing it shouldn't get penalized, because some aren't. And it's incumbent on us to do, to enforce the ordinance that's already on the books. That's already there. There are penalties, so we need to enforce the registration. The only thing, and Alderman Rainey, to go to your point, I'm not randomly picking tools out of the toolbox, I'm reading word for word the licensing provisions from page 234. So, I'm suggesting we keep what's been proposed, but rather than do it in that licensing context, put it in the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance, which is where it belongs. This licensing ordinance does two really bad things. It requires us to inspect somewhere in the neighborhood of 19,000 apartments, okay? Let's say it takes 15 minutes an apartment, which is probably not realistic. You're going to have several people spending years of man-hours looking at all of the good apartments. And guess what's going to happen? The ones that are problems are not going to get attention, because we're going to be wasting our resources on not the problem. The other thing that's wrong with this, and I'm not blaming the Corporation Council, they're putting together what we've asked them to put together, but if the landlord's not compliant under this licensing scheme, the person who suffers is not the landlord. Sure, they're not going to get their rent, but the person who's going to suffer the most are the residents who live there, who didn't do anything wrong. So, we're going to say, okay, you lost your license, you have to evict your tenants. That sets aside the fact that it's probably not even legal in the first place, because there's a state landlord tenant ordinance that can, please, keep it out. The state landlord tenant ordinance controls, or law controls that, and we can't circumvent that. So, we're passing something that A, is probably illegal, and B, I don't think we can reasonably implement. We're already having a hard time enforcing the registration. If we're going to take on trying to track down the other 19,000 that aren't a problem, then we're never going to get it done. So, I think this is a good suggestion. It's a suggestion. It is for introduction, but Alderman Rainey, as you indicated, we have a lot of people that are very concerned, and I think rather than wait two weeks and leave it as it is with everybody having the same angst and concern, it seemed to me to make a lot of sense to put something out there by way of a suggestion that we can have a conversation about over those two weeks.
Thank you. Next is Alderman Miller, Alderman Rainey, and Alderman Fisk. Alderman Miller?
I just want to make sure, part of this as well, is that there is due process involved in this whole, whatever comes out of this. Again, there's back and forth between the two ordinances, the licensing ordinance, and we're going back and forth, so I just want to, whatever we incorporate into the final recommendation, I'd like it to include, I'd like an impartial hearing officer, in the sense of, like, the one thing is, in the current licensing ordinance, the city manager can designate that a license is suspended, and then that appeal of that goes to the city manager, again, in that sense, and they, the, I'm sorry, the landlord has to go to the city, same person that issued their suspension to appeal it as well. So, the general principle I'd like to see is a fair process in front of impartial people in order for whatever we do in this regard. I just want to make sure that's included.
Thank you. I think that's one reason we might all consider Alderman Rainey's suggestion, because two more weeks of angst is a lot less than failing to get it right.
Well, with that, I mean, this is on, if we're mending the nuisance premises ordinance, that's different than the licensing ordinance as well. So, these are separate items. If we're talking about what we want to see in this one, I think the will of the council is going to be the, I'm sorry, the nuisance ordinance is going to stand, and we want to make that as good as possible. I think the licensing ordinance is another question entirely. So, making sure if we're going to amend the nuisance ordinance, I want to make sure we're doing it with due process.
Okay. Alderman Rainey?
Well, that was my original point, to see if we could make the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance work over the next six months or so, and put a sunset on it if it doesn't. But if we're going to continue this dialogue, which I think we shouldn't be, but since we are, I will do also, I was thinking about how do, how do we come up with the accounting for the individual buildings in terms of the violations, the tenant violations, the crimes that are committed? Are the police going to have to keep an accounting of incidents at, I mean, they're the ones with the information of who's been arrested, or what, I mean, that's the basis for the violation, an arrest. So, are the police going to keep an accounting of that information, and then where are they going to send it? Are they going to send that to the Law Department, or to Carl Knieva's department? Where's it, how's that going to, I mean, sometimes we have a daily bulletin for one day with like 12, 13 violations. So, every one of those has to be associated with the building, if, you know, and, I mean, and then over time, we have to keep up that accounting? It's a process that is just fraught with impossibilities.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
How about, no, I'm asking a question.
All right. Grant?
How will that?
Corporation Council, do you have an answer?
I do. It is, it is possible to keep those records. The call volumes are kept on a routine basis by the Police Department. It was also an underpinning of the enforcement efforts last fall, and it's also subject to ongoing review with the currently styled and constituted nuisance premises Subcommittee of Staff, which involves Law Department, Police, the Problem-Solving Team, Community Development, and the Health Department.
But weren't we following 11 buildings, or the ones that we published? Isn't that what we were doing? Now, we're talking about following 19,000 units?
We would be following those units that would fall under the purview of aggravated nuisance or nuisance, so whatever that universe may constitute itself to be in the future, nobody knows. But that data is already accessible.
Right, but we're not using it in that way. We're not saying, all right, the building at the 300 block of Custer, whoops, we have like two, you know, two aggravated batteries and one vehicle vandalism. We're not doing that now. That's, that's a process that has to take place in order to identify a building as it's in violation of the Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance.
That process was followed for the properties that were subject of enforcement actions and inspections last fall. That process can be duplicated in the future.
All right, to all 19,000 units, okay. Let's only hire Evanston residents for that job, because we're going to be hiring a lot.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, did you?
Right. I want to ask Alderman Wilson a question. We're not talking about all 19,000 units, though, are we?
No, we're not. We're talking about the units that fall within the definition of aggravated nuisance premises or nuisance premises.
Right. And that's how we get those, when we find out that two of these violations were committed on this Class A building that never had a problem before, but now somebody in there committed two crimes that, so that's.
Right. The list will change, as.
The list will change, and it's subject to review. I mean, there may be extenuating circumstances. This is, this is an issue that, that, on the enforcement side, there's always going to be fluidity on each specific premises, each specific interaction. But purely from a drafting standpoint, and purely from a, can we capture the information and utilize the information going forward? We've done the level best we can from a draftsmanship standpoint in capturing, utilizing information. That is, that is possible.
Okay. That's not the reason I turned my light on, but it came up. I wanted to ask Alderman Wilson, beginning on page 234, so what are the sections that you're talking about moving? Is it 588, 589?
The top of the page. What's referred to as Tier Two things, so.
Okay.
The Tier Two things, and then, you know, supplement the.
The stuff at the top of the page, and then supplement the fines as appropriate. I'm not cross-referencing them right now, but, you know, the more serious violations should have more serious fines associated with them.
Okay. All right. Got it.
All right. Seeing no lights for further discussion, ordinance 9016, Rental Licensing Ordinance Amendments, A11.
Well, wait.
I think we're at A10.
A10, sorry, is for introduction, Neighborhood Integrity Ordinance. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
We're doing both ordinances?
No, just A10.
Not the licensing.
Neighborhood integrity. Thank you.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Item A11 is ordinance 9016, which is the Rental Licensing Ordinance Amendments. Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I move to table this ordinance until we figure out the integrity ordinance.
It's been moved to table it, is there a second? I know you're good at parliamentary procedure, but I think there's a problem with that.
Page 14.
Alderman Rainey, did you want to?
No, I failed for the last of a second.
All right.
For the one of a second.
All right. There's no one who wishes to discuss this. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
So, could we clarify what we're voting, we're saying, we're introducing it?
Just on introducing it.
Okay, aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Miller?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Five, four.
All right. The motion passes. Alderman Miller, that concludes your report, I believe.
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Tindham, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item P1, ordinance 15016, establishing artist studios as permitted use on the ground floor in the D2, D3, and D4 downtown districts. This is for introduction.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity, as we're voting on introducing this ordinance, to encourage that we reach out to not only the Economic Development Committee, but also downtown Evanston, in order to encourage that every artist studio that opens on the ground floor include a retail component, to encourage shoppers in the downtown to stop into our various studios and perhaps purchase something.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 15016, establishing artist studios as a permitted use on the ground floor in the D2, D3, and D4 downtown districts. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Eight, one.
Eight to one, the motion passes. Alderman Tindham, do you have more?
Yes. Item P6, ordinance 16016, Plan Development at 831 Emerson Street. This comes by recommendation of the Plan Commission and staff to adopt a plan development with rezoning from a C1 commercial and R5 general residential to C1A commercial mixed use. This is for introduction.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we heard at Planning and Development Committee tonight, there is substantial opposition to this development. Personally, I feel that it is not in the best interest of the city to approve this, that we should probably go back to the drawing board, considering the fact that we have a potential TIF or a alternate future, future plans for this particular block. Frankly, this, this development as, as planned with a private dormitory does not serve any current or future desire on the part of the city, whereas a reuse of that property for another use might serve a better, a better. for another use might serve a better, a better function for the city.
Alderman Miller?
I'd like to reiterate the need for a plan for that area, I say, in the sense, for a long time, Emerson has been the border of downtown, and we haven't really determined what we want to do north of Emerson. And I think the times are changing in the current zoning of what we do in that area, and also the current downtown plan doesn't, has not determined what we need to do. So I would request we begin that process, because I think this is going to be the next big area that we have to decide what we're going to do with. So I'd formally request that we begin a process to plan north of Emerson in downtown.
Does he make a reference?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Miller, yeah, I think it probably appropriate reference to planning development or economic development.
All right. Any other discussion? Alderman Fisk?
May I make the suggestion to Alderman Miller that his reference be to planning and development?
Sure, just line with me.
All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll on introducing ordinance 16016, plan development, 831 Emerson Street?
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Revel?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Nguyen?
No.
The motion fails. And Alderman Tendem, that concludes your report, I believe.
It does, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right. Moving right along to call of the wards. Alderman Wilson, I couldn't even call on you before you got, excellent. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to announce that there will be a ward meeting in the sixth ward on February, I'm sorry, no, March 24th, 7:00 PM at Three Crowns Park, 2323 McDaniel. We will discuss a number of things, including the restated initiative for abatement of pests in our alleys and neighborhoods, as well as update on Green Bay Road construction plan for the summer.
Thank you. Alderman Revel?
I'd just like to say that I look forward to working with my colleagues to address the many big issues facing the city, and to realize the vision of making Evanston the most livable city for everyone in the community. And I certainly will endeavor to be a credit to all of my predecessors who've sat in this chair for the seventh ward, and I'd like to mention in particular my colleague, my dear friend, Marge Collins. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to announce that a meeting is taking place on Wednesday evening. Location to be determined, just email me, regarding the restoration of Mr. Walter, the parking enforcement, the school patrol officer crossing guard at Kirk and Mulford. He was unceremoniously removed, or relocated due to some conflict with a parent. Second of all, on April, no, on March 3rd, I believe it is, March 3rd, I'm going to, March 2nd, I'm going to hold a meeting for landlords and tenants in my ward regarding the neighborhood integrity ordinance, as well as the landlord licensing ordinance. And finally, having to do with bicycles, I have a constituent that has a contact in Indiana, and we are transporting more than two dozen confiscated bicycles up to the service center. It was supposed to happen tomorrow, it's going to happen later in the week, to be given away to kids in the mayor's summer program who have no bikes.
Thank you very much.
It's going to be delivered and dropped off at the service center, and they'll clean them up and, you know, repair them if they need it.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. Alderman Miller?
I just want to congratulate Alderman Revel on surviving this meeting. They're not all like this, but I also want to say, you know, this has been an interesting agenda, and I appreciate the conversations I've had with all my colleagues, including Alderman Revel as well, and, you know, hopefully, we won't get out at 11:15 in the future anytime soon.
Will you make the reference? Alderman Miller?
Yeah, officially.
Officially, I'd like to send the Planning and Development Committee just for reference. We'd like to begin discussions of planning for north of Emerson Street in terms of the extension of downtown, and also any ordinance changes as a result, zoning ordinance changes.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Alderman Revel, Marge Collins would be very proud of you. I know she's looking down and just going, this is so cool. But I, I need to tell you that some of you may know that we get a little bit of dinner to help us get through the evening, and by mistake, I got your fortune cookie. And I want to read your fortune to you. This is what it says. "You will find an outlet for your creative genius and accomplish a great deal." So this, this is yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
Can I also just say there, we have a first ward meeting coming up, first Tuesday in March, 7 to 9:00 PM, the library, so come out, we'll be sending out a notice pretty soon.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Just a quick welcome to Alderman Revel. I look forward to sitting with you at a later date to get to know each other. No other report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
And I will also welcome Alderman Revel. You've survived one of the hardest meetings we've had in a long time.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, you are already done, and we have no, should you make a motion to adjourn?